Call this meeting to order. This is the September 26th City Council Regular Meeting and Second Budget Hearing. Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Dodd.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill is excused tonight. Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any agenda modifications? We have no proclamations tonight. We do have one brief announcement. The Sebastian Police Department's Community Night Out will be October 23rd from 5:00 to 7:00. Everyone, please attend. Thank you. Okay, we are going to recess the City Council meeting and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Call to order.
Mr. Dodd.
Here.
Mr. Avino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Move approval.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dodd. Mr. Avino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kitchen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a public hearing on the CRA budget for fiscal year 2019. Resolution Number 1801. Mr. Attorney.
Yes, CRA Resolution 1801, a resolution of the City of Sebastian Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, making findings, authorizing amendments and transfers, providing for conflicts, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Carlisle.
Yes, Vice Mayor, this is the budget for the Community Redevelopment Agency, and by Florida statute, you have to adopt that budget as a separate budget from our actual budget, since those dollars can be allocated to be spent there. And with that, we'd answer any questions, and staff is here as well for any questions you may have regarding the CRA budget for 2018-19.
Okay. Does Mr. Kilgore have a presentation or just questions? Any questions, Council? Motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of CRA Resolution Number 18-01.
I'm sorry. Is there any from the public that would like to speak on this item? You missed a step. Okay. Second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Mr. Avino.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
And Vice Chairperson Kitchen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is septic-to-sewer program grant award for 821 U.S. Highway 1.
Yes, Vice Mayor, member of council, this is an ongoing program within the CRA to help remove septic tanks off of the Indian River Lagoon and to help with the water quality. And it's been met with some great success, and we're happy to provide these. This is a application or staff's recommendation to approve a permit from septic-to-sewer for 821 U.S. Highway 1.
Council?
I move approval of resolution, no, excuse me, move approval of the septic program grant.
Ms. Madam Clerk?
That's for the first property, right? 821 U.S. Highway 1, or is it both properties?
No, it's just the one property.
One property.
Yeah. This is 821 U.S. Highway 1.
821 U.S. Highway 1.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next is a grant award for 1206 U.S. Highway 1, septic-to-sewer.
Yes, Vice Mayor, this is actually three parcels, correct?
No, one parcel, three tanks.
One parcel, three tanks. So they're actually eligible for up to $45,000 to remove those three tanks. Additionally, they want to tie into our sewer tap at the community center or at the Chamber of Commerce, so we're going to allow them to do that, but we ask them to pay for 50% of the cost of what we had to pay as a city to tie into the main. And all this will be conditioned upon a couple of things. There will have to be a memo of understanding between the property owner and the city as far as maintenance of those connections and liabilities for any overruns because they are tying into a city main, and also the contingency that if the county objects to the tie-in, that the applicant will have to, the property owner will have to make their own tap. We're not anticipating that at this time, but we want to make sure the council's aware that there are some conditions on this specific application for the grant. But it does take three systems off.
Now, has the county decided that they don't need a lift station for this, that they're okay without a lift station?
They'll have a lift station. They're gonna, they're gonna have their own lift station, but they're gonna tie their force main into our force main.
Okay, I didn't see the lift station on the plans, but they were real small, so I couldn't tell. Now, is that three pieces of property that are joined, or is it actually one physical piece of property that has three different residents or three different businesses on it?
This is an existing property. It's always been one major parcel right there on U.S. 1. They just have three different buildings on it and three different uses.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Yeah, are those specifi, are those stipulations spelled out in the staff recommendation on this? So if we move approval with staff recommendations, we're covering all that?
I believe so, Mr. Dodd.
Okay. Can I move approval with staff recommendations?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is considering the proposed revisions to the FSL program. Mr. Carlisle.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Ms. Frazier has been working on this with those in the community and has, can answer some of the specific questions. We did have two corrections to the agreement on page 45, the very first paragraph. It says a property under the $15,000 CRA funds in the middle of the paragraph, as to 2:1, it should be 1:1 or a 50-50 match in that first line. That was a typographical error. And also on page 47 of 206, I would like to add a number 9 to clarify, if at all possible, that the funds cannot be used to correct a current code violation. Those are the two recommendations and changes that I have, and then I would turn over any additional specific questions to Ms. Frazier.
I thought I saw that code violation language in here someplace. Did I not see that?
It talked about sign code violation, to correct a sign code violation. And so I wanted to make sure that we were clear that once you got caught, it wasn't time to go out to the city to help you if you want to. This grant, I believe, was determined to help spruce up properties, not save you from not doing that. So not meant to be punitive, it's mean, it's meant to be helpful.
Okay, yeah, I just thought I remembered seeing something about that code, you couldn't clean up code violations with it.
You did.
I have one issue, and it's, actually, it's in that first paragraph also. It's at the end of it. We're basically saying here that they're limited if they have, or they're eligible if they have not received a previous grant within two years. I think we need to stipulate in there that something along the lines of that if they've not received a grant for the same improvement as listed in Section 2, within a window of time like five years as opposed to two. I'd hate to see people every third year want to redo the signage and get a grant each time to do that, but if they come back and ask for a grant for signage and then two years later for landscape, and then two years later for something else that fits in that line, that's, that's fine, but I would hate to see us getting in position to provide grants to people to do things like re-landscape stuff that dies after two years or redo signage at the end of two years. So I think we need a longer timeframe for that, if it's for something they've previously been given a grant for. And I, was I clear in that, or?
I believe so. I have that they would not receive the same grant funds for the same project within a five-year timeframe.
Yeah.
Did we not have something in there, Ms. Frazier, that said they could not get the same grant for any time limit for the same improvements?
I didn't see that, but.
I just want to clarify.
I'm, I'm, now I wish I had that in front of my, me too, because that is striking a chord with me. There's something in here that does state you cannot get the same grant for the same improvement within a certain time period. And we can clarify what you're, you're suggesting, Councilman Dodd, absolutely.
Yeah, because I saw the two-year, I saw the two-year thing in here twice. I saw it there, and then I saw it one other pla, okay, on page 50. That's a strikeout on that, so that's, that goes away where it says two years there, but.
If you'll allow us, Counsel, to either add this language or clarify that they cannot apply for the same grant, whichever counsel prefers, one of the, one or the other, and we can clarify that.
Item Number 8 on page 47, under the same ownership, receive the minimum grant funds $50,000 for two physical pieces.
There it is, yes. And let me clarify that we simply were attempting to streamline and, you know, consolidate some of the grant language so that it was more easily applied. We certainly aren't trying to change the program in any, any manner. This is a great program, very popular, we just want to make it even more popular. So I just wanted to make sure that the council understood that, and I appreciate Councilman Dodd pointing out some of the, the notes that do need to be clarified.
Yeah, because item, item 8 does say, "Grant for the same proposed improvement will not be eligible."
Yes.
So I would assume that means that if they come in and ask for a signed grant, and they've already had a signed grant, they can't get a signed grant.
That is correct. I knew it was in here.
Okay. Then forget what I said.
Do you still want to change the two years to five years?
No, I, two years is fine. I just, I just didn't want people wanting to redo their landscape or redo their signs every two years because if they can get a grant, you know, the minute you get somebody a grant, they're gonna spend money.
All right.
Ms. Frazier, page 49, it also says Section 4 that, I mean, if you read the verbiage, my interpretation is that should they meet all the criteria, they can still, may or may not be awarded by the CRA Board's discretion due to funding limitations, competing applications and/or competing priorities. So that gives you guys some discre, or it gives us some discretion, I guess, as whether or not you would give someone a grant, a repeating grant on something anyway.
That is correct, and this is exist, existing language.
Okay.
Again, we just wanted to move it up and clarify it that it's not guaranteed that they would get their grant award.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. McPartlin?
I move approval of the changes to the FSL program with what Mr. Carlisle recommended. Second.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Avino?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned the CRA meeting and reset and reconvening the City Council meeting. This is going to be a public hearing on the final hearing of, on millage for calendar year 2018 and fiscal year budget 2018-19. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. As Council Noah and for the benefit of the public, Florida law requires that a municipality adopt a budget prior to October 1 of each year, requires two public hearings. This is our second public hearing. In accordance with Florida Statute 200.065, subsection 7A1, our tentative millage tax rate for calendar year 2018 and budget year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, was adopted by the City Council at its first public hearing on September 17, 2018. The city is now required to adopt a final millage tax rate with its final public hearing.
Mr. Carlisle.
Yes.
Do you want me to go ahead and read the resolution?
If you would, my Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, the first resolution, which is on the millage, is a Resolution R. 1831, a resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 3.1514 mills for the calendar year 2018 and allocating same to the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, providing for conflicts, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. You're gonna read them all at one time?
Yeah, I can, I can read on. A Resolution R. 18-32, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, making appropriations for the payment of operating expenses, capital expenses, and for the principal and interest payments on the indebtedness of the city in the city's general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital improvement funds, golf course fund, airport fund, and building department fund as provided for in Schedule A attached hereto, establishing authority of the city manager, manager to implement the budget, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. The last piece is the capital improvement, Resolution R. 18-33, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting a six-year capital improvement program for fiscal years ending 2019 to 2024, providing repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Carlisle.
Yes, Vice Mayor, again, this budget is a balanced budget. It is at the rollback rate, as, as mentioned in the resolution of 3.1514, and that we would ask the City Council to consider that rollback rate in the budget. And with that, Mr. Kilgore has a brief presentation just for your edification and for the public's knowledge of how the budget has been completed. Mr. Kilgore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have complied with all the state requirements. We did advertise the budget and that we were having the hearing tonight in the newspaper last Saturday, September 22nd. Tomorrow, we will hopefully advise the property appraiser that the millage has been adopted, and they'll use that on the tax billings. Following that, we have to file all the forms that we process, the DR 420, and we do a certification of our maximum millage and some other documents. We have to submit that to the state with a copy of the advertisement so that they know we, and that they do review it and come back on us if there's any kind of failure to follow the procedure. So that's very important that we follow through with that. The budget in summary totals $31 million. Twelve thou, 12 million of that is for the general fund, and then the other various funds of the city. We've added a net amount of 10 employees to the general fund this year, and one in Stormwater, a construction inspector, and also a building inspector in the building fund. As far as part-time temporary workers, we actually reduced by one the number in general fund. We've reduced by four in the golf course fund, and we did add a clerical assistant in the building fund. So it's been a good year. We were able to go with the rollback rate. We made some formatting changes. We're changing the Parks and Recreation to the Leisure Services Department. As you know, we've added accountability for the Stormwater fees to show those all together. We've got the operating costs and the capital needs in, in one picture. I believe we've added some employees that were needed, and we were able to fund more than we have been for employee raises. We were successful in negotiating the health insurance cost, and we invested quite a bit more actually in capital infrastructure. If you remember, we've got the public works facility coming up. We've also got the stone crop and project in the Stormwater Fund, so all those things added together are substantially higher than they were in past years. So we'd like for you to finish off the public hearing and then approve the resolutions for the millage and the final budget and the capital improvement program. Before I open it up for questions, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the City Council this year, the Budget Committee, the new city manager, he was very supportive, the other department head, and all the staff members that participated, in particular Jennifer Smith on my staff. She's the one that helps put all these documents together and does a lot of number crunching for me, so I do appreciate her role. So let's open for comments or questions.
Anyone have questions? Okay. I'll now open the hearing for public comment on the millage, the budget, and the capital improvement program. Anyone from the public wish to speak on these items? Seeing none, this hearing is closed. Okay, let's take the motions individually on the resolutions, please, Council.
I move approval of Resolution Number R. 18-31.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I move approval on Resolution R. 18-32.
Second.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin? Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I'll move for approval of Resolution R. 18-33.
Second.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we're on item 10, the consent agenda. Anyone here wish to remove anything before we go on? No?
I move approval of Consent Agenda, item A through J.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we have no committee reports or appointments. There are no additional public hearings. We have no unfinished business. And is there anything from the public on an item that is not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time? Come on up.
I'm sorry I got here late. I was told if I got here in time, I'd be shown how to put some maps before you. Basically, I'm here to try to furnish you with some information that is not generally in circulation about the railroad. First, whether you know it or not, the railroad is owned by a Mexican railroad company, the Florida East Coast, that is. They bought it because they are tired of the problems with container freight through the port of San Diego, getting lost going to Chicago, Denver, before it gets to Mexico. They now have direct access through the port of Miami to the largest container ships in the world. Mexico does not have seaports capable of receiving these super container ships. So they also have announced it is their intention to try to acquire trackage that's directly under their control from the Florida East Coast to Mexico. The CSX Corporation owns trackage which is on the market from Jacksonville to the Florida-Alabama Line. Public hearings under certain types of sale are not going to occur. We're gonna find it, possibly that happens. Brightline, you've read in the paper, they're looking at even expanding their plans to get from Orlando to Tampa here in Florida, and, you know, it's in their long-range planning to get to Jacksonville, and now they're involved in a project in California and Nevada. So I think that anybody who thinks that Brightline is not coming, you know, has their head in the sand. The offer has been put forward to various cities and not the county because of the litigation where the county has spent over $3 million fighting all-the-board Florida one way or another, for the city to look at getting a railroad station for all-the-board Florida and would also serve Amtrak if it was to choose to come this way. The benefits and the counter side of it have to be carefully weighed, but the one benefit would be that you're going to slow train traffic down. You're not gonna have trains running 110 miles an hour through the city because you're gonna have the station that they have to stop at. I have used all-the-board Florida from West Palm to Miami. They do not accelerate where they break your neck, you know, or anything, you know, and you have a bottleneck at the Sebastian River Bridge. Currently, the bridge is restricted to 25 miles an hour, and it has to be replaced in the next few years, and at that time, it'll be a boondoggle, just as the way the traffic on the Route 1 bridge when they rebuilt it across the Sebastian River where we were one lane, you know, on part of a bridge, and part of the bridge was finished and we were driving there. The railroad's gonna have the same boondoggle, and they also have the issue of a curve as soon as they go into Brevard County. So your station in here could serve probably bringing you business, but also to keep your train speed down. The last thing which concerns me, and I suggested in order to solve the financing that it would take, look at what happened in New Jersey when the Metro Liners started running the Northeast Corridor from Newark to Trenton, when they started, once a week, in the paper, you know, some car and a Metro Liner collided. In 10 years, in spite of the Penn Central being bankrupt, there were no at-grade crossings between Newark, New Jersey, and Trenton. There, you know, the Penn Central was bankrupt. Somehow, funds were found to tunnel under, bridge over, and close all grade crossings. This is something that the city needs to, you know, put its foot forward in looking at. The majority of your population lives on the wrong side of the tracks to get to the hospital. You are going to have freight trains. You have them now that are running a mile and a half long. They're gonna be running, you know, up to two miles long. It's already been tested. I've been informed by certain people at the FEC. The speed is going to have it that, you know, if there's only one, when the track, when we have the two tracks in, you're gonna have a train going north and the other track for trains coming south. You're gonna have situations where the two long trains will hit that crossing about the same time, and you could be tied up there for 13 or 15 minutes for those two freight trains to get through because, you know, there's no way around it.
Okay, you have one more minute, sir.
I'm asking that the city take a healthy look. If they would like to get hold of me, you can call me. It's 772-532-6035. Would meet with staff or any of you individually in the future to discuss where I have my information and where it comes from.
Okay, and your name for the record?
Frederick Mancine, Fred Mancine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on something? Come on up.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Stevens. I live at 150 Concha Drive. I mean, I'd like to give you all a Lagoon Report card, if that's okay?
Just hot off the press last week. I was giving a couple cases to hand out. I wanted to make sure the council people come. Give one to the city manager. And I'll be happy to, I'm gonna be managing to get one to the board.
Oh, absolutely. If you need some more, feel free to get ahold of me. I live at 150 Concha Drive. I also wanted to make sure that the council realized that a San Francisco jury awarded Dwayne Johnson $289 million after ruling Monsanto's intentionally concealed the health risks of its popular Roundup products. The jury found Monsanto's acted with malice and oppression because they knew what they were doing was wrong and with reckless disregard for human life. This should be a strong message to you all.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Moving on to new business. Mr. Carlisle, you want to talk about the construction service agreement, please?
Yes, Vice Mayor, and again, this is a bid that was put out for the Barber Street improvements. We'd already awarded a proposal to redo the roofs. This does the bathrooms and the staircases, so this was the only bid that the city received, and we'd asked the board to consider this bid for the Barber Street Restrooms renovation in one, for $135,910. And that's what builders showcase.
Any questions for staff? Entertaining motion?
When's the last time that they were redone, if ever? My understanding that they're original to the construction.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I would ask. I would ask. The Vice Mayor, she has a lot more historical knowledge than I've only.
I think we even discussed this on the disabilities board, that they were not up to code and what have you, so.
And the stairway is not safe at this point, so.
It's been a while. Mr. Vice Mayor, I move approval of item 15A.
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Oh, anyone from the public want to speak on this item? Okay, roll call.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item is approve the purchase and installation of an emergency standby generator for the police evidence building.
Yes, Vice Mayor. In the construction of the police evidence building, it did not include a emergency generator, which is required to keep the evidence at temperature and humidity and those things. But we're taking another whole look at this. We know we need this generator, but it's been the generator system backup standby power for this facility, the police department, IT department, and the, and now the police evidence building. I've asked Scott, and he's done a great job working with contractors, to look at what we need. We need to get this one done. Currently, the police generator won't run the whole building because it's partially running our IT building here, and we looked at trying to just remove that and run a generator to take up that so that the police department, which operates as our EOC, and I'm giving you history so that you'll understand when we come to you with the next request, you'll understand where that's going. So directed staff, we don't need to do this hodgepodge. We need to get the police evidence building done because that's a requirement. We need to get the share, the police department done because that's going to, that's our EOC. That leaves us with no power in this building, which in a storm, I think we need to get this building up and running as soon as possible. So we're looking at, and we'll be coming back to you once we get the information, to put a whole building generator on this facility as well. So the city complex as a whole will be powered, and that way we can serve the public at their most, time of most need. It's just, it's amazing that we haven't been there before, but we're going to move forward with that, but we'll bring it out to you later.
I move approval of item B.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, work authorization, CSA 4 for consulting.
Yes, Vice Mayor. This is actually to look at putting the pickleball courts out by the airport, and we have looked at several areas to put them, and one of them was Friendship Park. But looking at that area, it's, we're trying to shoehorn, literally shoehorn pickleball courts in there at a very expensive cost, and parking's at a premium at this facility during the season when tennis is up. We lost some parking with the construction of the police evidence building. Meeting with staff and talking about this, we come up with a location out at the airport where the old maintenance building used to be, where I believe we can get eight courts in there for less money than it was going to cost us to put six courts behind this facility. We can put 30 parking spaces instead of 14. I'm getting quotes on modular bathrooms, and the one that I just got today, which I thought was pretty remarkable, was about $40,000, and we have to put a lift station in, not $400,000, $40,000. I'm imagining that the cost for that restroom will be about $100,000. We currently have $180,000 in the budget from this fiscal year to start this project. We have 213 in the capital improvement plan for next year that you just approved. That should get us our eight courts, our parking lot, and our restroom. The following year, we have 174,000, and that should be able to get us our lighting, we hope. But we're going to have the contractor and Shulkey design all of that in place. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's going to be a lot less expensive. We'll end up with eight pickleball courts, not four or six. We'll have adequate parking, and it'll put people out at the restaurant, out by the golf course restaurant. As one of our board members from the Budget Advisory Committee had suggested, and I promised her we would look at that, and we did, and I think that shows that we are paying attention to what our residents and our committees give us direction to look at, so.
Very good idea.
I move approval of item 15C.
I'll second it, absolutely.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Bill Tierney and I live 104 Atlanta Drive, and I'm curious about the thing with the pickleball. It was discussed several years ago, and money was put aside for eight courts in the back here. And now, all of a sudden, we see that they want to do something over by the airport, and there's no facilities over there. It's probably going to cost a lot more money. I mean, there's no restrooms, there's no lights. There's everything right here. I'd like to know what the main purpose is of switching this after all, two years that have gone by and nothing has been done.
Actually, we went to bid on this site here, sir, and it came in quite high, and it was only for six courts and not eight, or four courts, actually. So it was way over budget, so we had to make some changes, and he just said that he's going to be able to come in under budget and for less money at that other location.
But this money was already supposedly set aside two years ago for, to do these courts back here, and what was it spent on, something else, and now it's not available?
Yes, it was, but it, the bid came in at like three times the amount of money that we had set aside for the project in the back.
Right. So why not get these people to bid for back here?
There was $213,000 budgeted for the courts, and the bid came back at over $500,000 for four courts, and with only 17, I think, new parking spaces, 14 new parking spaces. If you have four players per court and you end up with eight courts, the 14 new parking spaces wouldn't give you parking for the pickleball courts. So we were stuck in a situation where that, we were literally trying to force a square peg and a round hole back there. There isn't enough room without us purchasing property, and we, I guess we could have pursued purchasing property, but there really wasn't enough room back there. What came back to the council was, let's look at buying more property back here. In order to do that, well, once we start adding the money in to purchase property, we're looking at a million and a half dollars, million, million and a half dollars to build the pickleball courts. We've got a great piece of land at the airport. I kind of think it's a good idea to look at that, where we can put ample parking in, we can put restrooms in. The pickleball courts are, it's level, they're going to be easily accessible. There's a nice access road in there. Don't have to do any of that. We can put all the parking that we need for the pickleball with restrooms. It'll take us probably the remainder of this year and into the first part of next year to get them built, which I hope we can do that quick.
Yeah.
But it, they just don't fit back here without us purchasing property. That was the conclusion.
That ball field that doesn't get used is more than, more than enough room for eight pickleball courts.
Well, it actually isn't. This was actually doing away with the ball field. The design was done. We paid 30-some thousand dollars for a design to fit in there, and what they, what they came back with was, you have to purchase property in order for us to be able to get more parking spaces or to get an adequate number of parking spaces. And that, and that, you know, once, once you start talking about buying property, then you totally change the whole mix.
Yeah, but there's probably plenty of parking here already, and, you know, for the amount of people that play pickleball right at the moment, and this, you spend, two years have gone by and nothing has happened, and all we hear is that, you know, yeah, it's in the works, it's in the works. Now, why couldn't you get these people to bid for back here and do the same thing that they're doing over there? When you already have facilities here, you've got restrooms, you've got lights, all these other things you're going to have to build over by the airport, and that's going to wind up costing a lot more money in the long run.
You don't actually have restroom space for the pickleball courts.
I'm sorry?
The restroom space at the tennis courts is not adequate if you add eight pickleball courts, so we were going to have to add a restroom. If you just look at the ramifications of what the law requires that we do, and it became evident that building back here was not, it was going to cost us a lot more money than it was worth, so we started looking for other places.
And how many years do you think this is going to take before this can get something done?
I will, I will tell you right now, we'll have pickleball courts, some people playing on pickleball courts in 2019.
I'd like to see that.
Okay, I hope you do. I hope you do.
Thank you.
Right?
You're correct. We, we have a contractor that we've already gotten a quote on, and we're, for six courts, at 138,000. So we can do eight courts. It was three times that to put the courts in back here.
Yes.
For eight courts, I'll get more courts for a third of the money than it was going to cost us to shoehorn it in here and to make fit. This, this is going to be a great opportunity, and it can be expanded. There's, there's just no way it was going to work adequately back there. We would make it work, but it wouldn't be a premier place to play.
No. Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Counsel?
There was a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Jeanette.
Okay, Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, city attorney matters?
Nothing, ma'am.
City manager matters?
Just to let you know, the, at the splash pad, if you haven't been by, the first rack for the solar panels is up, so that project's moving forward, and so I'm excited that that's coming, coming to fruition, and the conflict resolution for the City of Fels, mayor, got moved to October 10th, so I will be attending that meeting just to bring information back to you on their conflict resolution with Sebastian River Water Control District, Sebastian River Water Control District.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Ms. Jeanette, do you have anything for us?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. McPartlin?
I just want to say, last Friday, we had the opioid summit held here at Sebastian City Hall. I want to thank staff for making everything proper in the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, the place was packed, and it's available on the City Hall YouTube site as well as the Chamber of Commerce site. I mean, this opioid, it's an epidemic throughout the country and the state. It really affects us locally, so you can review it. It has not only information relating to children and families, but actually families, how it tears them down, as well as recovering addicts and all the services that are available to get people off of these opiates. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Carlyle, what are we doing with the old covers from the splash pad?
They're going to be going at the dog park. We have them out at the Public Works compound, but they'll be actually going out at the dog park. They're re-erected out there.
Okay.
Unless counsel has other thoughts. That was my understanding before I got here, that was the agreement, but if there's other information.
I don't think there was an agreement, but we talked about it a little bit. Mr. Dodd?
No, thank you, nothing.
Mr. Avino? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.